...United States that we live in, and some of those that we can celebrate that have protected our values. Bottom line up front, as most military folks like to do, this Saturday, 8:00 PM roughly, weather pending, God will get a vote on that one. Hopefully, right now, it's projected for good weather. We should be arriving back with two local veterans, hopefully a van provided by Holloman Air Force Base, and probably, I'm guessing, about seven to 10 motorcycles, a Patriot Guard Riders truck with the light bars you guys probably seen around town, that Jim drives that, and hopefully, an escort from some of our law enforcement. So, we'll see about that. But, 8:00 downtown on White Sands to New York Avenue, and I'll give you some more details than that. Special thanks, first of all, for y'all letting us have this opportunity to talk. Some other folks important, we see a ton of activity downtown. I love the fact that downtown is getting revitalized. Some of those business owners, every time we ask for anything, they're willing to either provide input, provide help, provide support, or advertising off of that. So, to Chris Edwards, thank you, Lydia and Emmanuel and Terea, appreciate that. They've offered up the Gardens on New York, and we're gonna have, pretty much, we'll call it a gathering, a small reception, where the public, who is hopefully out in force Saturday evening, can meet the veterans, talk to them, ask questions, say thank you for your service, say welcome home. And if that doesn't mean, if you are under the age of probably 55 or 60, you may not understand the importance of that when it comes to Vietnam veterans. Welcome home is understood by that community, because they didn't get one. And that's mainly what we're gonna talk about, or I'm gonna talk about. So, thank you for them. Also, I'd like to highlight some great nonprofits around here that have made this possible, before I give you the details. We are a local, or a national motorcycle club, the U.S. Veterans Motorcycle Club, honorably discharged veterans, we love to ride, and we love to support veterans. I don't get to do that active duty anymore, but when I see efforts like this, it's 100% and I can go and affect some veteran causes, like we have done in town with some roof buildings, supporting some cancer issues, things like that. Another great local organization that has a lot of support here, the Patriot Guard Riders, if you guys have seen them, the state captain, Jim, all his folks, Mailman is here today, another PGR rider, as we call him. They started in 2005 for a special place in Hades for people who were disrupting funeral services of our servicemen and women that were killed in action. And they had a political point that they wanted to make at the soldier's funeral. And PGR was created to make it a little harder for them to get to the funeral. So, a line of bikers is something you can cross if you'd like. So, there you have it. Another special group of people, 100 Women Who Care Alamo Gordo. Two and a half years ago, one of their members, actually, a few of their members, entered our nonprofit organizations' club into their drawing that they do, which was the first time I'd heard about it, quite honestly. A pretty unique group of women, they donate a little bit of money each month, they put their resources together, they pick a cause, and they attack it with that resource. Our funding from them was about $13,000, which was pretty amazing from a small town. We gave 6,000 of that to the Honor Flight to sponsor local veterans to do this trip. The two veterans here, Roger, Bredy, and David Hatcher, and James Motley of Tularosa's not on this trip, will be on a future trip. Both of them are Alamo Gordo residents. And the Honor Flight of Southern New Mexico, headed up by Elaine and her husband Derek in Las Cruces, coordinate this. And there is a video that hopefully Rachel can get up and play to show you. It's about 3 minutes 45 seconds, and I got about four or five minutes after that, and I'll get out of your guys' way. There's some of you that are follicle challenged like me, so it won't be hair. But if we can get that video to work, this gives you an idea of what these gentlemen and women are doing when they go to Washington, D.C. Roger and David both served for almost 25 years. They started their service in the Air Force in the early '70s, when Vietnam was going on. They retired, individually retired after about 50 years combined service. They come back one October, 5:30 PM into El Paso, figure it'll be, and Fort Bliss is putting on a big welcome home down there. The main Honor Flight bus is going back to Las Cruces. That's why we are doing this effort, to bring them directly here, instead of going to Las Cruces and staying in a hotel that night, so we can welcome them here in our hometown. That should be about 8:00. Let's see. Colonel Spears, the wing commander at Holloman, and his staffer's been supporting this. They're gonna start the flyers. Hopefully, they figure out the legal issues, if there isn't any, and we can borrow one of their buses to haul us. If not, they'll get a ride in my wife's SUV. Or if somebody else wants to offer up a van, that would be great, too. But I think, hopefully, the base will work out. Jim Ernst, PGR is gonna be in his truck as well, which ought to be good. And hopefully, we have some law enforcement that can pick us up at the Border Patrol's checkpoint, south of town, White Sands, whatever. But when we roll up White Sands, it'd be nice to avoid some red lights and stay, keep the bikes, the PGR vehicle together as we cruise through town. The plan is to turn right, slowly up White Sands, turn right on 10th, turn left on to New York, and then pull right in front of the county courthouse. Lots of room for people to stand there and welcome our veterans back. The only request I have is not for money, it is for your support and your advertising. Tell your friends, share the advertisement of this. It would be great if we treated this like a Fourth of July parade, and we had both sides of the street lined with American flags and welcome home signs. Welcome home to a Vietnam veteran is a huge deal. We will gather at the Gardens of New York, like I talked about. So, I will tell you, I served as a fighter pilot in the Air Force for 20-plus years, stood up the 1st Squadron and commanded that till I retired here at Holloman. I've seen about every ceremony the military has to offer, some of them great and some of them pretty somber. I've done NASCAR flybys, missing man formations, funerals, career days at elementary schools, promotion ceremonies, enlistments. None of them come close to a welcome home. When I came back from Iraq on a combat mission, late at night, weather delays, we landed at Aviano, there was a band playing, probably about 200 people. You've never felt more American than that day. So, please help us celebrate these two veterans. Honor Flight and their attempt to welcome them home is a huge deal for this generation. Our veterans are spoiled, and I will tell you that, as one of them, they are spoiled coming home from war now, where everyone appreciates whatever politician sent them to war. Our civil leadership doesn't care. The veteran did what they were asked to do. That was not the case 50 years ago. And those wounds are still there. Never forget. I think we all know that. And a quote I saw in one of my brothers in our club, his wife posted, "Not everyone who lost their life in Vietnam died there." Not everyone who came back from Vietnam ever left there. PTSD is a constant reminder. 22 veterans a day commit suicide. That's an eight-year-old statistic from the VA, but the number is still high. So, let's welcome these two veterans home. With that, I'll try to answer any questions that you guys have.
Anybody have any questions? No?
No.
Well, I want to thank you. Thank you for reaching out, and thank you for coming tonight. I truly appreciated that. I come from a long line of military. Interestingly enough, my dad was a Korean War vet, and my son is a veteran as well of the Air Force, and my brother, well, gosh, my whole family, honestly. And so, I appreciate you coming today. I will certainly be there. Hopefully, several of us can make it, just for a little while, and welcome them home. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Next, we have Chuck Andreas, and he's going to present some information on the Alamo Gordo Public Schools. And I should have reminded you, although you did really well, that we are keeping these presentations to 10 minutes. So, with that, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners and citizens of the city. I want to thank you for what you're doing. That's a tough act to follow. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your continuing service. Thank you very much. I'm Chuck Andreas, and I'm here because, I'm gonna preface this, this is not in my notes, but I want to let you know that I gave a presentation on the school board on May 18th with 15 days' notice to respond to my questions and facts, all based on IPRAs and documents provided by New Mexico PED. Silence, crickets. So, I gave a presentation in a county in June, same thing. I got response from the county and from the citizens, but not from the schools. So, if it's fact or it's false, let's open it up for questioning. Let's interrogate it. If there's a truth, it'll stand the test, no matter what it is, interrogation, that's what we're looking for, truth. So, tonight, this presentation is gonna be a rapid-fire PowerPoint on the Alamo Gordo Public Schools, and it's gonna be behind the scenes. I got the control. Here we go. Okay, we're gonna skip that page, and I guess there's a delay. Well, anyways, it's not showing up. Anyways, I have a New Mexico statute, it's a statute, passed in '78 and still active today. It's Chapter 22, 1-1.2, Paragraph F, I want to read part of it. "The legislature finds further that the public school governance structure needs to change to provide accountability from the bottom up instead of the top down." The schools do not currently do that. Okay, we're gonna get into some statistics. This is all provable, it's all taken from New Mexico PED. The public schools, the numbers are proficiency numbers. Proficiency is described as something that was can be taken, the student is able to accomplish the task at that grade level. So, if you get an A, B, or C, you're proficient. Conversely, that, if you get a D or an F, you're not proficient. So, let's take the first one there, Buena Vista Elementary. Just scan all the way through there. The average is 46% proficient. Take the converse of that, or the inverse, that's a 54% failure rate, or non-proficient. Jump on down to North Elementary, that's a minus, less than or equal to 20%, coming across the board until you get the science, is 39% are proficient, or average of 27%. And go down to the bottom, or almost, Sunset Hills Elementary School, 38%, 38%, 23%, 46%, and the average is 36% proficient. Inverse of that, 69% fail, or non-proficient. Next page, we're gonna skip down to Alamo Gordo High School. Same number, similar, 33%, less than 20%, 47%, and the average is 33% of the students in high school, in Alamo Gordo High School, are proficient. The flip side of that is 67% are not. Are these numbers to be proud of? I don't think so. So, let's congratulate the people in the schools of high rolls, Holloman, Buena Vista Elementary Schools, and Holloman Middle School. So, here we go. So, what are these schools, why do these schools score much higher than the others? Is it the teachers? Are they better? Is the classrooms are less disruptive? The students, are they smarter? Or are they using the same curriculum? Questions to ask, questions I ask, questions everybody here should ask. Realistically, New Mexico was still at the very bottom of the United States in school achievement. Has there been a root cause analysis performed by the state or the district to find the problem? Don't reinvent the wheel. See what schools are successful in doing in other states, and implement that plan. Take the best of all the examples. Why, everybody knows what CRT is, Critical Race Theory. Why did they recently change the name? It's now called culturally responsive teaching, and there's references on this. Next page, we got the pillars of social studies. Centered on race and ethnicity, differences and separation, what they concentrate on. There's not diversity, equality, and inclusion, it's race-based, not merit-based, there's a difference. Social justice, is there activism, chaos, disruption, and intimidation? And restorative justice, it's lacking of accountability. Now, here's taken straight out of New Mexico PED, and we got the information there, I'm gonna read this partially. "This rule establishes the academic content and performance standards for social studies for grades kindergarten through 12. The social studies standards include six strands, and I'm gonna concentrate on number five, ethnic, cultural, and identity studies. So, CEL, also known as social-emotional learning, this is taken directly out of Castle. We define social and emotional learning, CEL, as an integral part of education and human development. CEL is the process through which young people, all young people, and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions." That sounds really good, doesn't it? You gotta read the text really closely. Did I hit the wrong button? Hit the wrong button? Oh, there it is. Government policy and funding. CEL policy at the EU federal level. U.S. federal policy plays a key role in creating conditions that support statewide and district-wide CEL implementation. So, the key federal legislation policies such as American Rescue Plan, Every Student Succeeds Act, and CEL in workforce policies help ensure that all students experience the full benefits of CEL. We already know what's included in that. So, CEL transparency. "The official representation of CEL is learning how to cope and relationship understanding. Underneath which is not mentioned in public documentation or teaching standards is gender identity, gender-affirming care, gender pronouns, and gender clothing. Children are presented with confusing gender-sex lessons that make them uncomfortable and confused about their biological sex. Children are impressionable, which makes them ripe for a contrived narrative. Children do not naturally question their sexuality." So, ask your children or grandchildren, what are your pronouns? You might be surprised. Even if a biological female transitions to a male, she will never be a real male, it's only in her mind. From a list of IPRAs we have, we have found out that there are 72, over 72 books in the school system, our library, which are of this type of nature. I'm gonna show you, just two of them. One is Boy Meets Boy. People say we're taking this out of context, so we took a picture of one of the books, and you can read it for yourself. Says, "I've always known I was gay, but it wasn't confirmed until I was in kindergarten. It was my teacher who said so. It was right there on my kindergarten report card. Paul is definitely gay and has very good sense of self." I saw it on her desk one day before naptime, and I have to admit, I might not have realized I was different if Mrs. Belcher hadn't pointed out to me. Another book we found is My Heart Underwater. This Goodreads review says, "While disturbed and appalled by the student-teacher relationship, I believe wholeheartedly the story of abuse appropriated by the older queer woman against another teenage queer woman deserved to be given its moment of recognition. Yet despite the relationship between Cory and Miss Holder, taking up the first half of the novel, the grooming and trauma Cory underwent at Mrs. Holder's hands are never properly discussed." That's another book, there's a lot more books. We have the list. Teachers' unions are involved in emphasizing social and emotional learning, CRT, grading for equality, equity rather, not equality, and project-based learning and home visit training, teacher residency, and recruitment programs. Transparency. Number one, New Mexico PED and Alamo Gordo Public Schools have broken trust with parents and the community by saying CRT is not taught in our public schools. Number two, there is no class called CRT, but is embedded throughout every class as a CEL. Each subject is taught through the lens of these narratives. Number three, why are they deceiving the community? Why is the information not readily available to parents and community members? Full transparency of curriculum is required. USDA and school lunch program. "In furtherance of the government agenda, the USADA has issued a directive. Any school who participates in free lunch program will be required to allow transgender children in whichever bathroom or facilities which they are comfortable." I'm gonna skip on that, next one, we just run out of time. Government funding and requirements. APS accepted government funds from many different agencies and funds from the American Rescue Plan and ESSA that have requirements regarding curriculum. APS requested funds specifically for the teaching of CEL in the amount of $20,000. The district was only one of 15 school districts and charter schools in the state to request that purpose money. When you receive money, there's strings attached. Status. APS policies state the curriculum is determined by each district and are consistent with community values. These are not our community values. However, since APS accepted federal funds, knowing that they had to teach the elements of Critical Race Theory, social studies, and the elements of social-emotional learning, any statement to the contrary is not true and is misinformation. Back to the basics. Teacher character, integrity, respect, compassion, and understanding enriches the children more than focus on race and gender. If taught through the lens of the goals and attributes and embed these lessons in the curriculum, there will be more benefit, less confusion, and disruption in the lives of the children. What's at stake here, ladies and gentlemen? Our future.
Mr. Andreas, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up. I'm sorry.
I'm done. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you, the opportunity to present this information to the community, and I appreciate questions and interrogation. Ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm assuming nobody has any questions. We will move on to the approval of the minutes, I believe that's where we're at, is that correct?
Public comment.
Public comment, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Hmm, okay. We have four people signed up, three are under Agenda Item 13, so I'll let you speak at that time. But we do have one, Gloria Killian. Where are you, Gloria? Do I have to come to a commission meeting to see you? Is that how that works? Hello.
Hi, thank you very much for this time. My maiden name is Beecham. My parents, my grandparents, and my great-grandparents are all buried over at Buena Vista Cemetery in the old section, and I would like to challenge all of you to drive through Buena Vista Cemetery in the old section. It is a disgrace to the community. The tumbleweeds are as tall as I am, and I think that we need to not wait for the Big Give program, the volunteers from Holloman, the airmen that come and clean it up like they did last year in October. They use weed eaters. The stems on those weeds are not gonna be cut down with a weed eater. It's awful. And I understand that Gene, the sexton, we are very happy to have him working there. He's a good worker. He only has one other person, there's two people that maintain the cemetery, and they, my understanding is, they're only allowed to maintain the, each side of the cemetery, I'm not sure what it's called, but they're not supposed to work in the older section. And I understand, with only two people working, I can understand why they can't do that, but I don't think we should wait for a one-year program of volunteer help. I would like to think that they would be, someone would be allowed to spray the weeds before they totally get out of hand, so that it doesn't look like it does. I was told by someone that it's family, those are family plots, like where my parents and grandparents are, and that family is supposed to keep it up. Well, I am probably one of a handful of people who live here who have had generations of family buried at Buena Vista, and there's no way that family members are gonna go out and take care of their family plots. So, I'm not sure what you can do, but I would like to see that the city could hire more people to work under the Parks and Rec Division and maybe help at least take care of it before it gets so out of hand. But I really do ask that you go for yourselves and see what it looks like, because to me, it's just a disgrace. So, that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe somebody could reach out and explain to her how that works.
I'll add it to my time here in a minute.
Okay, okay, yeah. So, a city manager's gonna speak in just a moment, and he'll kind of explain to you how that works. I do know that Rich Merrick happens to be here tonight, and he actually started Operation, am I saying that right? Honored Pass?
Project Honored Pass.
I was close.
Do you mind if I speak just real quickly, ma'am?
I'm gonna have Brian speak on that. Is that okay? Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, yeah. But Brian will speak on it, and so, my point was, I think that that's what you were referring to. They do go out once or twice a year.
The way it is, I know they put flags out on the holidays on the, on the, right. There's no way they could put any flags out there the way it is right now.
Right.
It's awful. You've gotta go see it, please.
Yeah, so, I'll let you speak on that. I think.
We're at that point, ain't we?
Yeah. Let me get my bearings straight here. Hold on just a second.
City manager's report.
Okay. What if I get minutes? Oh, I know what, okay. So I'm not sure what you can do, but I would like to see that the city could hire more people to work under the Parks and Rec Division and maybe help at least take care of it before it gets so out of hand. But I really do ask that you go for yourselves and see what it looks like because it, to me, it's just a disgrace. So that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe somebody could reach out to her and explain to her how that works and...
I'll add it to my time here in a minute.
Okay, okay, yeah. So so a city manager is going to speak in just a moment, and he'll kind of explain to you how that works that I do know that Rich Merrick happens to be here tonight, and he actually started Operation, am I saying that right? Honored Past?
Project Honored Past.
I was close.
Do you mind if I speak just real quickly, ma'am?
I'm going to have, I'm going to have Brian speak on that. Is that okay? Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to, yeah. But Brian will speak on it, and so I, my point was, I think that that's what you were referring to. They do go out once or twice a year.
The way it is, I know they put flags out on the holidays on the on the
Right.
on the parade. There's no way they could put any flags out there the way it is right now.
Right.
It's awful. You've got to go see it, please.
Yeah, so I'll let you speak on that. I think...
Really, that point, didn't you?
Yeah. Let me get my bearings straight here. Hold on just a second.
City manager's report.
Okay. I get minutes. Oh, I know what, okay. Boy, I had that one messed up. All right. We're going to move on to the city manager's report where he will give us some information on that very thing.
Okay, I just had a couple of items, but I'll go ahead and speak to the the question on the cemetery first.
Okay.
So the area that's being talked about is the area that's the non-perpetual care.
Right.
And she is exactly right. That is the the family members, et cetera, that have to maintain that area. But on October eighth, and I think this is what what Mr. Merrick was going to going to talk about, Honored Past along with Keep Almagordo Beautiful will be doing a cleanup, cutting the weeds, et cetera. The way that the Montavista Cemetery was set up, that area is not maintained by city staff. Now, Keep Almagordo Beautiful is a is a federally funded program and is designed for like these type of cleanups. It's not the only thing that Keep Almagordo, Keep Almagordo Beautiful does, but they are working, excuse me, working with the honored honored past group to to clean up that area. And she is exactly right. The weeds are are very tall.
Right.
It's been a challenging year, not just for city staff, but for the citizens in trying to keep up with the with the weeds.
But there is, there is an event planned. I think I saw it somewhere.
October eighth.
October eighth. Okay, so October eighth, yes. All right. Got it. Thank you.
I just wanted to report from the state economic development outdoor recreation department. The city of Almagordo, we were one of twenty communities around New Mexico that received a grant. Ours is in the amount of $99,000, and that money is going to be used, excuse me, that's obviously part of outdoor recreation. The community services department, working with the engineering department, will be rehabilitating the walking trail on Indian Wells from Washington towards White Sands. They'll go as far as the $99,000 will will take them. If we're a little bit short, we'll probably be coming, we won't be coming back to commission through a budget resolution so that we're not stopping, you know, mid-block. But we need to have that costed out.
Right.
And bids in first. The other thing, and it has gone out on on our social media accounts, the city, we are applying for a grant through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Benita Lake, the restoration project that has been going on since the Little Bear Fire in 2012. The lake has been cleaned out. That project is complete. We're doing the final closeout documents on on that, final payments. If you'll remember, we also, at the tail end of that project, received monies to finally address the dam refacing, the water dam refacing, and the intake tower. That project, barring weather delays, anything here at the end, will be wrapping up mid-part of mid-part of next month. So what we're looking at on this grant application is we're, it's a fifty-fifty match, so we're applying for $250,000. The city match will be $250,000. The first project that we'll be looking at to fund is the actual roadway. The city of Almagordo, we own the roadway just below the dam and then around to the West Lake campground. And obviously, that road is not in real good condition at this point. It has had very little maintenance because of all the construction activities, et cetera, since 2012. So that's what we'll be looking at. And as part of this grant application, and that's the information that went out on our social media pages and and other means, one of the things that we have to, we have to do in in this grant is solicit public participation in a very short survey that has to do with, I believe, outdoor recreation. Senator Senator Ben Ray Luhon is encouraging the city to to apply for this grant, and we'll do what any politician can do to help. Hopefully, let us be successful in in obtaining that grant. And that is all I have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We will move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything? Yes, Commissioner Reardon.
Brian, over on Cuba Avenue from in between Tenth and Eleventh Street, I don't know if the city did this patch or if it was a contractor, but it's settling again, and it's, I don't know if we could have staff look at that, get it redone. It's got a pretty good little depression in it.
And you said Cuba, between Eleventh and Tenth?
Yeah, Tenth and Eleventh. It's right there, kind of by the old gas company building, I think. It was right in front of there. Noticed it today on the way to to the meeting, so.
I'm not sure if that's ours, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we did it or if it was a contractor that did it, but, and then, you know, later on in the agenda, we have a street maintenance program bid coming up, but do we have, I wanted, I mentioned it to staff because when I was on, or not staff, but some of these other guys, when I was on commission before, we used to utilize the cutler process, and I think when we start doing these, if if we start rolling on these street maintenance programs, if we could take a look at maybe utilizing cutler again and try to get more bang for our buck with these roads when we're when we're fixing them, instead of doing the old pulverize and pave and putting all brand-new down.
Yeah, the, we we went away from quite a number of years ago, I don't remember the exact year, I want to say it was somewhere around
Yeah.
2013, 14, that timeframe anyway. We, the city, we used to piggyback off of the state contract, the New Mexico DOT portion of the state contract, and in in that year, they changed the way that they bid that out, which didn't allow for municipalities or other entities to piggyback off of it. So the city did go away from the from the cutler process, but once we do have the the street assessment, the water and sewer assessment, everything's brought back together, and we're coming back before commission to give give the proposed projects and the and the timelines to to complete those, we'll be looking at whether it's cutler, it won't be like what you remember from the traditional street maintenance program. We'll be looking to get the most most bang for the buck, use the appropriate treatment on
Yes.
the various roadways.
Yeah, just, you know, back in the day when they used to use that, you know, we'd get ten or fifteen years out of those roads during that process. It's fairly quick and and simple and gives a really nice driving surface that you don't bounce down all the time in potholes, and so I just wanted to bring it up that when we get to that point, that maybe, you know, if we can get enough roads together to where we can just have them bid it, you know, directly to us rather than through the state contract, so.
My phone's ringing down here, and I'm ignoring it, I promise, but anyway, okay. Does anybody else have anything? I did want to mention, I mentioned earlier Pastor Matt Soloria was assaulted, and, you know, I would just ask you, keep him in your prayers. It's a pretty sad day when when pastor of a local church is assaulted, and there was an incident up in Albuquerque recently at Calvary Church in Albuquerque, and a security guard that was on staff there was shot and killed. And so this is getting to be too much, people. This is getting to be too much, and we need to pray for our churches because once is once, two is under attack. So we need to pray for them, keep them in our prayers, and we're living in a crazy world, man. I'm telling you.
Was that here?
Calvary Chapel was in Albuquerque. Matt Soloria here, Bethel Baptist Church, yes.
Bethel Baptist, so is that the one on scenic?
Mm-hmm, yeah, after church.
Never heard of it, so.
Yeah, and anyway, it's unfortunate that it happened, but it did. I spoke with him today, and he's going to go see a specialist in Albuquerque tomorrow, so, yeah, that's really unfortunate. He's a, he's a super good guy. He really is. He did not deserve that, so. But anyway, just keep our local churches and our churches, even nationally, in your prayers. That's crazy. That should not be happening, so. With that, does anybody have anything else? No? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
No.
No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner McDonald. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Paul. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Mountain.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rudden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Pang.
Aye.
And motion passes seven zero. We will move on to new business. Item nine, consider and act upon resolution 2022-43, naming the commission chambers the Donald Don Carroll, Donald E. Carroll Commission Chambers. And is that pretty self-explanatory, or do we need an explanation? And if we do, does that come from the clerk, or does it come from us, or?
Yes, from the clerk.
Speak it once.
Okay, so I was just asked to put the resolution on to be able to name this commission chambers the Donald E. Carroll Commission Chambers in honor of his serving twenty-five years of service. However, it is actually because he served twen, twelve straight years in the position of mayor from March 1996 to March 2008.
Very good.
I believe he was our longest-serving mayor
Serving mayor.
in Almagordo's history, so.
Yeah.
Twenty-five years sitting up here doing this.
I know.
That's a long time.
Yeah. I'd become a drinker, I'm telling you. I'm just being honest with you. My husband's sitting in the audience. He's like, yeah, I'd become a drinker too, right? Is is Don's, Mr. Carroll, is any of his family here tonight? No? It looks like Ronnie Ortega may have some information for us.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Commissioner, City Manager. So I understand this was a request from Senator Griggs to have the chambers named after Donald E. Carroll, who was our longest-standing mayor for the city. And so with that, we are approaching the commission to ask for your approval to have this this chamber named on his behalf.
Where where would we put the outside or in here?
Yes, it'd be a plaque outside.
Just a plaque outside.
Just right outside the door.
Plaque outside the door, but named above the doorway and then on the exterior of the building, correct? Yeah, the exterior of the building also.
Okay.
And so we would do, ask to do a dedication ceremony later with the family if it's approved.
So I have to tell you a Don Carroll story real quick because it's just funny. Many years ago, before I even knew who the mayor of Almagordo was, there was a time when I got, did not get involved with politics at all. I was working at a place, I'm not going to say where, but I was working there, and my boss was in their office, and they were talking to somebody, and there was this foul language sort of coming out of their mouth as they were talking, and and Don Carroll walks in, and he wants to see my boss, and I said, okay, well, can I, can I tell her who's here? And he said, well, I'm Don Carroll. And I said, oh, okay. I had no clue who he was, and so I went back there, and she was on the phone, and so I said, well, she's on the phone, can we just wait a few minutes? And and he's like, okay, and he's getting kind of antsy, and she's in there, and this words are coming out of her mouth, and I'm going like this because I'm like, oh, and he's kind of getting uncomfortable, and when she gets off the phone, I walk in there and I tell her that somebody's there to see her, and she says, who is it? And I said, I don't know, somebody named Don Carroll. And she said, Susan, that's the mayor. And I said, oh, well, then the mayor's here to see you. And I walked out. I had no idea who he was, and so later I studied up on him, and I said, well, that was kind of dumb of me, wasn't I? Probably should have known that, but anyway, he was a good man, and I don't know, does anybody have any questions, any comments, anything? Did anybody know him? I'm sure you know him.
I didn't serve with him, but I I remember being in meetings.
Anybody else ever have an opportunity to meet him?
Yeah.
I know Brian did, but that doesn't count. Well, he was a good man, and and so, I mean, I I certainly don't have an issue with it. I don't know. Do we need to take a vote on that, I guess? Yeah.
Just make a motion to, make a motion to approve resolution 2022-43.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Mountain.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rudden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Pang.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We are now going to officially name the commission chambers the Donald E. Carroll Commission Chamber, so that's a kudos for that one. Okay, let's move on to item ten, consider and act upon award of public works bid number 2022-006 to Laloos Dirt and Paving related to FY21 Street Maintenance Program. Ridgecrest Drive, I cannot tell you how excited I am to see this. In case I haven't said it, I'm very excited to see this. I've been working on this for several years, so I'm very excited to see this. I'll probably say that ten more times, but that's okay.
Is it because the engineer on here has the same last name as you?
Do they?
Yeah, on the the Smith Engineering.
Oh, I didn't even notice that.
I didn't either.
No, it's because I have a constituent on Ridgecrest that literally called me once a week for six years, so, yeah.
I've got one of those on Hubbard Drive.
He's a very nice man, and I truly enjoy talking to him. I just can't give him new answers, so you can bet I'll be calling him tomorrow morning. Anyway, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, the item for you is to approve an award for the FY21 SMP Ridgecrest Drive project to Laloos Dirt and Paving. The work consists of installing new six-inch water main valves, connections, water services to, I think, about fifty residences, fire hydrants, removal and replacement of concrete sidewalk, curb gutter, construction of one new driveway apron, earthwork, milling, paving, patchwork, traffic control, and appurtenances. We did advertise the project on August fourteenth and twenty-first, opened bids on September the fourteenth, and we had three bidders. The recommendation to award by the engineer is also attached to your packet along with the bid tabulation. Performance period's about ninety days, once we issue notice to proceed.
That's how long it'll take?
Once we issue notice to proceed, but there are some items that aren't, have a substantial lead time.
Because you know what's going to happen once you start, right?
Everybody will complain.
Yes, yes, that's exactly what will happen.
It's the nature of the beast.
It's true.
You want it, but you don't want the mess that goes with it.
It's true. It's true. But when it's done, it'll be great. Yeah. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Was there a reason, you know, we have one bid that's substantially higher than the engineer's estimate, but we got two that are that are considerably lower? Is there a reason?
The engineer's estimate was based upon the ridiculous fluctuation in material prices that have gone, been going on for the last year plus, and continues to go. So they kind of aired on the side of caution.
Okay, that's why their estimate's considerably higher?
It's about twenty-five percent higher than Laloos Dirt and Paving, although between first and second bidders, there's about an eleven percent spread, so they're not too far apart.
They're not too far off, yeah. Okay.
It seems to me, and you know, quite honestly, I haven't seen one of these in a while, but it seems like in the past, this particular company has been lower than, I could be wrong, but it seems like they've been lower, the lower, on the lower end of the bid, so.
Laloos Dirt and Paving is a smaller company.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But they do good work.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Hopefully, we start seeing a bunch more of these here pretty soon, huh, Brian?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
No.
No? No?
I'll just make a motion to approve Public Works bid number two zero two-two dash zero-zero-six to Laloos Dirt and Paving.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright, a second from Commissioner Rudin, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? And motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
I will be calling my friend on Ridgecrest tomorrow morning, just. I'll let him know.
And I'll give you Bob's number, so you can give it to him.
Thank you, thank you. He really is a very nice man, and he really has been waiting a very long time, so this is, this is exciting. Okay, we'll move on to item eleven, consider and act upon first publication of ordinance sixteen sixty, amending chapter five of the Almagordo Code of Ordinances concerning alcoholic beverages. And City Clerk Rachel Hughes has some information on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, so we know that we did an amendment not too long ago on the same chapter five for alcoholic beverages. These further amendments are just a staff recommendation to remove duplicate state language, and in doing so, in the future, if state changes their language, we don't have to change our ordinance. The other amendment is to remove temporary alcoholic beverage dispensers permits. However, the City Clerk's office will continue to sign the approval or disapproval for the state's public celebration permits, or the special dispensers permit applications that an applicant would bring into our office. And I stand for questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Nobody?
It appears that we're going to try to be business-friendly when it comes to this, so that's a good thing.
Quite a concept, isn't it? Okay.
I'll be, you really think we can get this done in one day?
So, really, the, what is required on the, if you had a liquor license, you were going to participate in some temporary event? Because you hold license, but the city of Almagordo, we control the property, you have to, you would have to come in, and we have one portion that we have to sign off on saying that where you are wanting to sell the alcohol, that that is, that meets our ordinances, our zoning, et cetera. So, really, what we're checking is to make sure that you're the proper distance away from schools, churches, et cetera, what we regulate in our zoning and our ordinance. For the most part, assuming that we have the staff, the only reason we're saying one business day, we, the City Clerk may not be, may not be right there and available as you come in. But for the most part, the person should be walking out same day, either with our signature on it, saying to the state that, yes, we are approving, and it's upon the applicant, it's on the applicant to supply all the other information the state looks at to determine whether or not they will issue the temporary license. If we're disapproving it or not signing off on it, we will be giving the applicant the reason, which primarily would be, well, you're too close to a school, you're too close to a church, you're in the wrong zoning, you're up in the residential area. So, one day is, one business day is, should be, should be more than enough to, for us to say, yes, it's okay, or it's not okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Let's make a motion to approve ordinance sixteen sixty for first publication.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Rudin. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Rudin.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald. Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Pang.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, I'm really happy to see this. I think it's going to make a huge difference. Okay, we're going to move on to item twelve, consider and act upon first publication of ordinance sixteen fifty-nine, amending chapter two of the Almagordo Code of Ordinances by adding zero-two dash zero-five-zero, city commission use of social media. And City Manager Brian Caesar has some information on that.
Okay, for any of the legal questions, I'll obviously defer to the city attorney, put her on the spot. This is something that has been a topic of discussion for years. As commissioners aware, we do get records requests on a very frequent basis, and for the most part, the records that are being requested are in the city's control. If someone requests information on your city emails, or staff members' emails, the clerk, she has the ability to put in a work order and have all emails pulled. What we don't have control over is personal social media accounts that are outside the city's control. We have quite a number of official city, whether it's a Facebook page, it's a Twitter account, et cetera. And this has caused issues for many, many years now. So, basically, in a nutshell, what this is, what this is saying is that you, as city commissioners, recognize the official city of Almagordo pages. If you want to conduct city business as a commissioner on a social media platform, you will use the official city of Almagordo social media accounts. You'll submit that to a staff member, they will get it posted on whichever platform it is, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and whatever else that we use. I rarely use social media. And that, and this isn't taking away from any of the commissioners, elected officials, your ability to use personal Facebook accounts. What you're saying in this is that you will not conduct city business, and that doesn't mean that you can't, just like any member of the public could, take a post that we have up, for example, where the city of Almagordo, we put out that it's signup time for the summer activities at the rec center. You can repost or post all day long about that, it's just conducting official city business, saying, "I am Commissioner so-and-so of District X," and then conducting the city business. That you wouldn't, you're saying you won't do on your accounts. What this does for the city, obviously, if we have all the official communications from the various commissioners, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and we get those records requests, we can quickly pull off the information that's being requested. The other thing that it does, not only for city staff, but for citizens, it does give us a, somewhat of a buffer if there are complaints, lawsuits, et cetera. For a number of commissioners, we've had those over the years. Through the municipal league, the city of Almagordo, ultimately, the citizens have paid for those settlement agreements that have been in the past. So, this does not, like I said, this does not restrict you all from doing Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. It's really saying that in your official capacity, you will only use our recognized city-created government accounts.
Could it?
Quick question. In the ordinance, or whatever this is, is an ordinance? In the ordinance down there at the bottom, it says violation of this ordinance is subject to steps outlined in the Almagordo Code of Conduct for elected and appointed officials. Since that doesn't exist yet, it's only up for discussion tonight, do we want to change that in there until such time that that actually exists?
And now I'm deferring to the attorney.
Can you get her to come up to the podium?
I get into trouble, she gets me out of trouble.
Right.
So, I would agree, actually, that probably that section we might need to revisit, or take out for now and then add it.
Add it back in another time.
Once we do have that code of conduct outlined. And, I mean, when we get to the code of conduct section, too, you'll see that it does talk about the social media and stuff like that. But as City Manager explained, you know, this is really supposed to try to limit our liability when it comes to these suits. Pretty much, when I looked at all the case law concerning this, the big thing was city business. Are you conducting city business on your personal page? If you're conducting city business on your personal page, then it can be evoked. And so, we're basically putting this so that, we're saying, if you wish to conduct city business on Facebook, do it through, you know, our approved accounts. That way, we're not having to get your private accounts all the time.
So, what would we put there if we're not going to put that? Would we just leave it blank?
Strike it for now?
We'd just strike it for now, and then add it back in, amend it later, since that document doesn't exist yet.
Right. Okay. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm a little curious. We're going to look at this code of conduct next, and what if we decide not to move forward with it? What would be an example of something you would put there?
We just put state law or Governmental Conduct Act, or?
Violation of this ordinance, because there has to be a consequence for violating it, right?
And we could put, we could try to reference, like, the state statutes concerning, you know.
Not to kick the can down the road, but depending on what item thirteen is, I mean, you're going to bring that back possibly at the next meeting? Could we possibly table this one until that meeting? And then that way, we don't have to bring it back and publish it again twice, and, not that I don't want to pass it, I'm all for it, but you know what I mean?
Yes, you guys can definitely, if you guys want to obviously consider the code of conduct first, you guys can table it if you choose.
Or just do it all in the same meeting when we, because the other one's just a discussion only.
It's not an action item, right?
It's up to you guys. I just don't want to have to pass this and then turn around six weeks from now and bring it back.
You can table this, this item to the, to the next meeting. Depending upon the discussion on the next item, its staff's intention after the discussion to bring the code of conduct in ordinance format for first publication at the next meeting, depending upon how the discussion goes.
Wouldn't it make sense to just do it all?
Yeah.
All in one time?
Before we move on, though, I do have one clarifying question. I know, Brian, we had discussion about this, but the line between city business and personal business, that is really for number five here, that's when you interact with constituent, correct? It's when you identify as constituent, as a commissioner, and they ask for something, and you reply back.
Exactly, kind of like what you just said. The case law basically kind of explains city business as, say, on your private site, a citizen comes and is like, "Hey, you know, we need to fix this pothole," right? If you then reply, "Oh, yes, I'll get that fixed," or something like that, that's conducting city business. But my suggestion on that would be, please refer any such thing to the official channels. You know, if you have like a general comment, just referring them, like, you know, "This is my personal page, please refer any city business to, you know, the proper channels, through email, that kind of stuff."
He said just refer them to the mayor's page, he's being funny.
Let's give Brian's cell number.
Okay.
Yeah, let me give that to you, I need to look it up real quick.
Eight-eight-eight, not available. No, I'm just kidding, okay. Does anybody else have any questions? And do we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, we're just going to table this till the next meeting, depending the outcome of item thirteen?
Yeah, you'll have to make a motion in a second.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. Okay, so, do I have a motion?
Let's make a motion to table ordinance sixteen fifty-nine until the next regular meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, motion from Commissioner Rudin to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. It's just a regular vote, right? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And motion passes seven zero. And we're going to move on to item thirteen. It is discuss possible new ordinance of the code of conduct for elected and appointed officials. I do have three people signed up for that. I guess I let them go first, yeah, okay. Rhonda Merrick? Is it Princess Rhonda Merrick tonight, Queen Rhonda Merrick? Oh, that's right, you told me that, I'm sorry.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, and others. Thank you for taking the time to hear my comment. I'm grateful you have took on a code of conduct policy. I only hope it does not become the joke it was last time that we tried. I do believe in putting the past behind us and moving forward. I only hope this time, if you're going to have the code of conduct for the Commissioners, you follow the policies. My wish for the city, we could be a city who straightens the ground of each other without telling them it was crooked. Thank you.
That's cute, thank you. Okay, next we have Rich Merrick.
Mayor Payne, Mayor Pro Tem Wright, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager. First, I want to say thank you to Chek, and Festus, and Wham for what they're doing. Right on, brothers. But I want to thank you for giving me a minute to speak on Agenda Item thirteen. Couple of you up here were on this dais when we took the city, when we took the city code of conduct away. Mayor Payne, I believe you were, you were here and serving, and that point, I think, Josh, you were, too. I, first, I want to commend Brian Caesar and the City Attorney's Office for putting together a well-thought-out ordinance, because it took time to read it, and it is well-thought-out. It's much better than what we had before. As we know, in the past, the code of conduct really had no teeth, as the commission was judging their peers, and hence, the reason the code of conduct was removed, because citizens did not feel they were being taken seriously. So, having an ethics panel outside of the influence of City Hall is an absolutely beautiful and wonderful idea. It takes it away from you guys to have to judge each other, and it puts it in an independent panel that is going to look at the facts, and there's no, there's no outside influence. I think it's a wonderful idea. I'd like to see one change made to the section in the code concerning the ethics panel, and that would be as follows. Right now, what's written, it's a three-panel, it's a three-member panel, and I would urge you to consider the following, to change it to consist of a chair and one citizen from each district for a total of seven members. Let's get the citizens involved. Let's get our constituents, y'all's constituents, involved in this panel. And we could accomplish this in a similar manner as we already use with our boards and committees. You know, people who are interested in being on the panel would submit some kind of application, and we would look at it in a, same way we look at our boards, whether it be the cemetery board, the airport board, however. And each one of those panel members and the chair would serve for a one-year time, for one year. At the end of the year, review the selections, if there's other people that may want to be on the panel, we put them in, we take those out, maybe there's people that want to do it anymore. Hopefully, we never have to convene an ethics panel, but that would be, that would be in the perfect world. Hopefully, we never have to convene that. But I think by bringing somebody from each district, just like you guys represent the city, the ethics panel is going to represent the entire city if something was to happen with the commissioner. So, I think that would open the transparency, open the, just the understanding of what goes on. And I think, I think that's the only thing that I could see, you know, when I looked at that ordinance. Other than that, most of it is really, the rules and regulations that the commission is supposed to follow are the same as they were before. They're still the same rules, and, but the thing that changed was that ethics panel, and I think that's a one. They're still the same rules and, but the, the thing that changed was that ethics panel, and I think that's a wonderful idea. No matter how we go forward with it, I personally would like to see seven members on it, one for me, like I said, one from each district, and then the chairperson be in some way with a, with, with some kind of law back, background to help the common, the common citizen to be able to understand where, where, where and what we're deciding on. Thank you again for your time, y'all have a great night.
Thank you. And next we have Kathy Ramsey.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Ramsey, and this is the first time I've presented, so, um, I'm glad to meet you, Mayor Payne, and Mayor Protem Wright. Commissioners, I'll get this all, and city staff. I'm here to really celebrate this, this code. I am really impressed. I've had the opportunity over my career to work on a lot of policy regards to ethics, and this is very well-written, and I just wanna acknowledge that. There's nothing that is more important to me in government than ethics and integrity. I think it's where, um, you build public trust. I think that's where you build, um, people's willingness to work together. And, um, on the other side of it, unethical behavior, or misconduct, or any dishonesty in leadership will really destroy trust. And what, one of the things I really like about this policy, or this code, is that it also speaks, without regulation, but it speaks to the appearance of unethical behavior. And I think that can be just as damaging to a government as actual. And so, I like that this heightens everybody's awareness that it's not only doing what's right, but paying attention to how what you're doing can, is perceived by others. I think that's a really important thing. So I really wanna ask for your support of this. I have looked over it very carefully, and I think it would be a huge contribution to the city. Not only in, in effect of governing, but I think it's very proactive, and I think it'll keep you out of trouble, both individually and as a body, in terms of claims of unethical, um, behavior. And I also think it really, um, it underscores that public service is really about public interest, and that we come in with a nonpartisan place. And I love that it addresses conflict of interest and transparency, accountability. And this kind of a code is, is, uh, very much in place in most municipalities. I mean, this is not new to the world. I don't have the history to town about where we've been with codes before, but, um, I really feel strongly, this is a good one. And, um, I like that there's a process of, of response to violations, and I like the notion of an ethics panel and the connection to the judiciary system that's, that's named here. But I think bottom line, and I'll finish with this, is that I think when you create a culture of ethics within an organization, it, it, it's a process. I mean, it doesn't happen overnight necessarily, but you have to have foundation. And this code seems like a really good place to have a foundation. I mean, you can always adjust it as you learn from it, but I would like to see it, I mean, I know you'll, you'll deal with it as an ordinance, but I think it also needs to become a part of orientation for new people. I also think good ethics programs often incorporate, um, continuing education, perhaps once a year, where you, where you're reminded about ethical issues and could bring in expertise, because these are hard issues sometimes, and you can kind of fall into them without any intent, but you can create a lot of havoc, and I think this is, this really could protect the city. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I've got here. Anybody have any comments, questions?
I'm reading still. I'll start off. I, a good portion, it is my understanding a good portion of this is already covered by state statute laws, and the portions that are not covered, just the few that I've read, they are vague. Vague in a way that citizens can misinterpret it and kind of mold it and shape it and make accusations. Just looking at, it's page eighty-eight of our packet, the non-partisanship clause. Decision shall be made objectively without party or partisanship considerations, and without facts that are not directly or properly related to the matter requiring action. Two things wrong with that in my view, one, you can't enforce it unless the Commissioner straight out says, I'm, I'm voting this way because of partisan politics. And two, it will open up the city staff for, to spend more time fielding complaints from people who think, oh, a decision to increase the pay of police is a partisan issue, and they are breaking this. And just two clauses down under public trust, the three, um, hyphen C. Elected or appointed officials shall not provide to the public any information that they reasonably know to be untrue, inaccurate, or misleading. Again, I don't know how you can enforce that, no one's going to admit that they think what they said is misleading, but just with the partisan nature and the world we live in today, it's just gonna open all of us up to complaints that we were being misleading when all we were doing is stating the facts, so. I guess in short, I just think we, we do have a good foundation of ethics here in the city, and the state statute and, you know, the mu- new municipal league, they do provide training and guidelines. So I'm, I'm not really seeing the point of this.
Anybody else?
Pretty lengthy document, sorry.
It's quite a bit. So, what I'll say is that, um, there is a governmental code of conduct at the state level, and it's been my experience, and I think Brian can probably attest to this. It's not acted upon, I'm not even sure if it's really used.
It is.
In extreme, well...
I know it is.
Okay, but, I, you were kind of made an example out of, so let's...
And it was abused, and so, I, I mean, I kinda...
I get it, I get it, but, but that, that's, I think that was, you were made an example of. So I, more recently, more recently, I believe we've had a couple of employees that, there was some complaints filed against, and nothing was ever done on that. I've certainly never seen, um, I, I've certainly never seen it used. I mean, you say the one time, and okay, I, I get it, but, but as a rule, I don't think, now, they have, they have created an ethics commission, and I think that at the state level, if I remember correctly, I could be wrong, but I believe that they were kind of waiting on this governmental code of conduct until this ethics commission was created to see, um, how that would all tie in, so, and I don't know, I haven't followed up since. But, um, I think that, um, well, I don't know, I don't know what I think. I mean, I, you know, I could take it very personally too, because obviously I've had a code of conduct filed against me, but, you know, um, I, I think, well, I, I really don't know what I think. I think that we're all adults and we should act like adults, but I do know that it's a little uncomfortable when comments are made and, um, the city as a whole is lumped into it, so how do we fix that? I don't know. Particularly when it comes to social media. I, I don't know how we fix that. And I think, uh, it's unfortunate that we even have to have this conversation, so, I don't know. I don't know how everybody else feels about it. I, I don't know.
I think we all just, you know, we got two weeks before the next meeting? Is this one of the two weeks or the three-week periods?
No, this could be the three-week.
Two week between the, yeah, normal.
You have, have staff print you out a copy of it, and all of us, in the next two weeks, we just read through it and bring it back, and we can say yea or nay, you know? I mean, a good portion of it is in the governmental conduct act, which is state law, but, you know, that, that requires you to do something very, very illegal in order for that to come into play.
It does, it does, it's a little...
And then it, it does have, you know, ten-three, ten-four, those sections in there are, are the punishments and, and the remedies if you, you know, if you violate certain things and, and, uh, but thi- this gives us the ability to, to try to remedy a problem before it becomes a bigger problem, you know? So, and it kind of is a, is a CYA for the city. If we can say, hey, look, we, we did what we could do, and then it kind of limits our liability a little bit.
Right. And, and how, how was this written? I mean, what, you obviously must have looked at other cities or compiled it from other...
Yeah, so there was a lot of, thank you, City Manager, City Attorney, at the beginning of this. Uh, actually, the Assistant City Manager did the heavy, heavy lifting. So this was pulled from a number of communities around New Mexico, larger communities. Language, obviously tailored a little more towards Alamo Gordo, you know, because we have, different municipalities have different structure for their government than, than we do. What is included in the last item and to, in this item, now, changed a little bit because you all are elected or appointed officials. We've had for, in our employee manuals and policies for the thirty-plus years that I've worked here. But our employee manual doesn't apply, obviously, to, to elected officials. And so, if you're asking specific which, which portions came from what community, I'm not gonna be able to answer that.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm asking you how, because, I mean, obviously, you had to take some examples from somewhere else to put this together, right?
Primarily from, from Rio Rancho.
Okay.
Uh, that is, in, in speaking with the New Mexico Municipal League, their attorneys, they're the ones that, do represent the city of Alamo Gordo in, in these type of, of situations. They recommended looking closely at Rio Rancho, other communities also. But Rio Rancho as, as a, a very good starting point for us.
Right. So, I guess my point is, there are several other municipalities that have a code of conduct.
Most municipalities have.
So this is not something that would be unique to Alamo Gordo? This is something that sounds to me like it's actually fairly standard among many municipalities. I think the problem with the one that we had was it was truly used as a weapon, and it, and it was. It was, I mean, and I'm just giving you my personal feelings on it. I feel like it was used as a weapon against Commissioners that, um, individuals may have been upset with. And I think the difference with this one is it takes it out of the, and it puts, it put the Commission as a whole in an uncomfortable position, because nobody wants to have to, for lack of a better word, judge their peers like that, right? We all have to work together. So I think the difference with this is it takes it out of the hands of the Commission and puts it into the hands of a third party. What I like about it is the chair would be somebody that is, um, in the legal field. And so, hopefully with that, um, we would get a more non-bias, um, representation, if you will. I guess that's the best way to put it. Um, so I do like that, and I think, um, you know, you're never gonna have anything, it's never gonna be perfect, right? But, um, I guess for me, the reason I'm uncom- I mean, I'm not uncomfortable. The reason I'm comfortable with it is because, um, this is something pretty standard for most municipalities. There's not a reason why we should ever have to use it, and if we're all doing what we're supposed to, then it shouldn't be a problem. I get the whole, you know, no matter what, somebody could be mad at you thing. I mean, I would like to think if you found, um, an attorney, let's say, or, you know, somebody that, an outside attorney, obviously, Ashley would get it first, but, but, and that's something that happened in the past as well. But I would think that if we found an outside attorney or something to chair this commission, that they would uphold their, um, their, um, what is it, the code of can- canons? Canon of ethics, I'm sorry, the Canon of Ethics, and do the right thing for the right reason. So, I'm comfortable with that part of it. But again, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. I do know that this was recommended by the municipal league. So it's not something that was done all, like, willy-nilly. I mean, this is something that our New Mexico Municipal League recommended that we do.
Also, Brian, in there, this is probably more for our later discussion on it, but, uh, under the city ethics panel, it does say that the City Manager will appoint the chair. I thought when we discussed it, the City Attorney would be appointing the, the chair for the committee, is that correct?
It is, however, because obviously this is open, open for, for discussion. I'm a little wary of...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Different staff member, I'm, I'm the only one that answers to City Commission, and I really hate to paint a target on any other staff member at this point. Well, no, there's a couple.
Well, you see the, the concern there though, and this is due to past experiences with bad, poor ci- I'm not gonna say bad, but poor City Managers, um, that, you know, you get a, there's room for, for, uh, to, to utilize it for retaliation.
And that's, that's why it was brought to you all, just as a discussion item at this point. A person had to be put in there, I mean, there are any number of ways that it could be done. It could be, the chair is, feel free to click on the mic.
So, one of the things, when we were talking about this ordinance, because I mean, we've met a lot about this, it would not be appropriate for me to appoint a chair, because essentially, like, when the complaints come in, you know, I'm gonna look at it almost like I do any case that I get from municipal court, right? It doesn't have merit, does it not, what do we need to do with it? And then I actually present that case before the panel, and so if I'm then appointing the chair, that's an ethical conundrum that it would probably be better for me not to get into.
I just, that's where I have the, the little bit of an issue with it is, is, you know, like the mayor has stated, it's kind of awkward when you have to judge your peers, and that's the way the old one was set up. And, but I see room for abuse as well.
So, so a, a way around that for future City Manager, because I have absolutely no issues, I'm perfect.
Can we poll your staffs?
I think it was, I think it was Mr. Merrick that, that brought it up, although, shoot, I'm sorry, whichever, whichever member of the public actually brought it up a little bit earlier. You, we could solicit from the, from the legal field here in Alamo Gordo, people that would like to sit on or chair such a, such a committee, and it could be an item that comes before a Commission, and a majority of the Commission, prior to having any ethics complaint, you know, this person would sit as chair for a one-year period, a, you know, however, how long you all determine, uh, then that chair would form the panel as, as needed. If, if there were any complaints that actually rose to that level. As a suggestion, I mean, it's just...
It would be a, like a preset committee that's already there, appointed.
Well, a pre- a preset chair.
Preset chair.
Or chair, okay, and then the chair can pick whoever...
The chair could form, form the committee, the chair is selected by a majority of the Commission annually, or...
How is Rio Rancho doing that portion of it? Is this in their ordinance that way as well, or?
Do you remember that?
Just, just to see how they set it. You know, they're a large enough community that it's, it's not...
Uh, in, in Rio Rancho, the Commission.
The Commission actually sets it up?
Selects the chair.
Okay.
On an annual basis? There, there's a term in Rio Rancho of...
There's a term in Rio Rancho of possibly up to three years. Ashley's looking for it, but their Commission or their council, I think their council...
Could we, we just get answers for those questions, and then when we're bringing, I'm assuming everybody else wants to bring it back at the next meeting, and we can have that information?
Okay.
If that's the...
Could you also, the larger communities see, just kind of, so we know exactly who has one, who doesn't? You know, like Cruzes Clovis, Artesia?
So, I looked at Rio Rancho's. So, Rio Rancho, the Commission actually does the panel, like, they get all the members of the panel, and then the Ethics Panel there selects one person to be the chair.
I got you.
We thought it would probably be a little bit easier, better for us to just have one chair that was, you know, preferably a member of the 12th Judicial Bar, that's the, our attorney bar here, or, you know, such as an attorney or like a former judge or something, someone like that, as be the chair, and then have the, and then have the panel round to them.
I'm most comfortable with that.
Have it preset, like...
Somebody from the 12th Judicial, from the bar, yeah. I'm most comfortable with that.
We got, we got two weeks to figure out how we want to set that up.
We can change that language to reflect sort of the discussion that just happened, and we would bring this then back, if I'm understanding what Commission is saying. We would bring this back at the, excuse me, at the next meeting in our normal ordinance format. I mean, this is very close, but we would clean it up and have a ordinance number, et cetera.
Does anybody else have any questions? So, just so I'm clear, what are we deciding to do here? We're going to bring it back for discussion again in two weeks?
Discussion and possible action, probably, because like, tonight is just discussion only.
Yeah, tonight, yeah, there's no action item on this.
No, 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 I know that, I know that. But in two weeks, we're going to put it as an action, possible action item as well?
That would be what, yes, from a staff level, we'd be recommending to bring, and we will change the order so that this would be the first ordinance that you would consider for first publication, the Code of Conduct. The second then would be the social media.
The social media.
Okay.
Could you guys email us out Rio Rancho's actual ordinance, too, so we could read through that?
Yes, I can, I have a cheat sheet back in my office that I pulled and just copied and pasted, and so I'll get that sent to all of you.
Isn't that plagiarism? No, I'm kidding, okay.
It's not in the Code of Conduct.
Right.
But it, it is your assertion that most, not all, but most municipalities have some type of code of conduct. Is that correct?
Yes.
If we could just get the numbers, I'd like, I'd just like to know which communities do and which don't, you know, say, hey, we, you know, and who, I'm assuming they do.
And if it's easier just to tell us who doesn't?
Yeah.
That would be, I think that would be okay, right?
It's going to be the smaller, probably the smaller communities, but the larger ones, Rio Rancho is considerably larger than we are, so...
Sure, right. Okay. Does anybody else have any more questions?
And that's, you're just looking at the Code of Conduct for the state of New Mexico, is that what you're saying? Nobody else?
I'm sorry, say that again.
You're looking at the Code of Conducts only for the state of New Mexico and all the municipalities here.
In our state.
Nobody else.
Oh, right, yes, only for the state. Yes, I'm sorry. You're talking about municipalities within the state? Yes, yes. I would assume that's right. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah.
I'll just say again, I think while we have an opportunity to look through this in detail, we should take that opportunity and look at anything that is vague. Look at anything that can be applied, and maybe, we don't need to vote on it in the next meeting. You know, we can take the two weeks, come back, share our feedback, and then...
If we decide at the next meeting that we, we don't feel comfortable with it, or we need more discussion, we just table it. Table it till the following meeting or however long it takes, you know, but...
Right.
I agree.
I agree with that. I just don't want to kick the can down the road.
You know, we kick the can two weeks, and then we can take action, or we can table it, you know?
As long as it's not two years, I'm good. Just saying.
I say, a lot of this, it's...
I mean, if we decide to do nothing, then we should just...
Yes, just table it.
Say we're going to do nothing, is what I'm saying, yeah.
They say, a lot of this is already in play with the Governmental Conduct Act. The only thing this does is it gives us a little bit, a little bit that we can do here, but...
Yeah. I guess...
In the event that...
And I don't mind doing some of this research myself, but if there is a way to find out, I'd like to know how many, how many times the Government, Governmental Conduct Act, Governmental Conduct Act is actually enforced or acted upon.
Our former Secretary of State.
Yeah, well, again, that was political, so...
You're talking about by the state, correct? Not by the individual municipalities?
Yeah, because the state is...
By the state?
By the state. No, by the state. Because I personally don't believe that...
I bet it would surprise you.
That they do anything, I don't...
I bet it would surprise you, because the way it works, you've got to, you've got to send a complaint to the Secretary of State's office, and then they do some sort of an ethics deal, and look at it, and then disclose whether it is or it isn't, and then they either forward it to the DA's office or to the AG's office.
Do you think that that would be easy to find out?
It should be. You could probably get on the Secretary of State's website and look it up.
Yeah, I'm really curious, because I actually, I don't think they act on it as much as they probably should sometimes, so, that's just my opinion, I could be wrong. Been wrong once. Ask my husband, he'll tell you. Just kidding, anyway. All right, moving on. Does anybody have anything else?
Do we need to do anything on that, or y'all just need your directions?
We don't need to do anything, right? It wasn't an action item.
Bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Just a motion to adjourn?
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Rine. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion passes seven-zero. We are adjourned.